All right, we come to order, Ms. King with this spread, the letter of the flag.
Praise his father in heaven, give us this opportunity to get to the praise here. Give us the understanding, Lord, how directing God is more than not to create an hour children, that are blessed for them to live. And Lord, please, Lord Jesus, strengthen us all, that we do your will, and not ours. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Randy Rentsch.
Here.
Judith McKee.
Here.
Melinda Ballard.
Here.
Baron Glass. Maria Bass. Gary Castles.
Here.
James King.
Here.
All right, item A is the executive committee report.
Mr. Ralich checks, everything looks good. The sales taxes down again this month by about, well, not that much, but about 5,000 over. You know, last year was about 5,000 more than this year. It's generally though, it looks like that's what happens in latter part of the summer, that sales taxes do go down, but hopefully it won't be a trend up until they go back up.
Any questions? Thank you, Randy. All right, item B is approved July 14th, 2022, 48 minutes.
Next question, approve them.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, item C is recognized Charles Smith as employee of the month. He was a good friend of mine, so.
Mary, this is definitely an honor for me. New Charles for a number of years, doing vendor work for the school system, and then when he came on board, he would come up to the high school, or you'd see him out in the parking lot, and he always would stop, take the time to talk to you, but I got to know him a lot better when I took over as the principal of the high school. If I needed something, Jeff would tell me, hey, just call Charles. And Charles was there. And it was a pleasure to know him, and to be able to work with him, just a few years that I was able to, Mary. This was really and truly a great idea, but I'm not going to take full credit for it. Kaylee's got to, Kaylee's got to take some credit for it also, because she called me. And I said, Kaylee, I said, this is a great idea, let's roll with this. So Mary, please accept, in memory of Charles, this award for him, employee of the month. Would you like?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank y'all all, on behalf of Charles, I think he really did try to give everything. He tried to really show up and be there, and he was a great man. And I'm glad that, I'm the only one that knows and appreciates it. So I know that he's looking down and seeing this, and saying, man, I'm glad they waited, because I would not have wanted to stood up and say thank you for this, but he does appreciate it. And he loves you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. We have a comment.
I'm escaping.
That's the trend.
Can I take it? I'm going to put this on my man.
Please do.
Thank you.
Please do.
Love y'all.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank y'all.
Item B, is the lead 2025 score release, Ms. Kristin.
It's a short agenda. Okay. And we had a little more tape for you. Yeah, it's on, we had created slides. This is kind of just a snapshot of testing from the spring, now that we got, you know, the end of July, everything came back, grade three through eight, so it's kind of just a combined summary of what our scores look like. The more detailed information will come, the data cert and assessment rosters and all that come out this week, and we'll start looking to get ready to figure our SDS. But this is just, like I said, a snapshot of scores. And what this looks at is mastery plus, you know, the state, they want students that mastery are above. And so this is kind of that, what they consider proficient for the state. So we're comparing 21 to 22, 21's in red, 22's in blue. So this is across the parish, all grades, all subjects that tested, the percent that were mastery or above. For ELA, we went as a parish from 33% mastery to 37% mastery, so that was a 4% change to the plus. In math, we went from 15% mastery to 20% mastery, so that was a five plus change.
Y'all, that's huge. We don't ever see that kind of growth in math, we're super excited.
In science, we went from 18% to 20%, so a 2% change. And then in social studies, we stayed the same. But if you see at the bottom, all subjects made improvement, except social studies, but they stayed, it stayed the same, it was 20%, we didn't drop. But the state has been adopting a new curriculum for social studies, and it's one of those things, you're not really sure what you're supposed to cover, and you're not really sure what's going to be tested. So at least they held their own, and stayed, and didn't drop. Okay? The next one is by individual school, and again, this is all subjects combined, for all the tested grades in each school, but you see that we did have growth. CPHS, the high school, grew from 20% mastery to 22% mastery. Most of their growth, or the biggest jump in growth was in social studies for them. They had a 6% change in social studies. At the junior high, they went from 19% mastery or above to 22%, so a 3% change. And their growth was mostly in ELA, they had 6% increase in ELA. Columbia went from 40% mastery and above to 45, so that was a 5% change. And their growth was in math, they had a 19% change to the positive in math. So that was a huge growth in math. Grayson went from 19% to 22%, so 3% change there, and theirs was in ELA. They had a 6% growth in ELA. Union Central, overall, they went from an 18 to a 15, so there was a little bit of drop there. But they did grow in math, they did have a growth in math, which is a big thing when you look at schools. And then the last slide just compares us to other districts in our region, northeast Louisiana. It's kind of hard to see that, but I'll tell you, as you look at it, we're a little bit below the state, but the only two parishes in our entire region that are higher than us, as far as the percent that are mastery or above, are Washita Parish, and they're always high, and West Carroll, is just a little bit above us. So out of our entire region, we're third, I guess you would say, in the percent that are, of our students that are mastery or above right now.
I've been looking at this since I was in her role, and sometimes we'll knock West Carroll out, but we're always either second or third. Of course, we always want to be above the state, but, you know, so that just kind of lets us know. But when you start seeing reports come out, and you start looking at growth in other districts, you always want to know, well, how do we compare to everybody else around us? So I always appreciate this view as well.
And then just as soon as SDS, we get all that figured in, it comes out, we'll have a little more detailed information about everything.
Thank you, Kristin.
You're welcome.
All right, item B is discuss revising food calendar for election day.
All right, so you have a copy of the calendar in here. November 8th is the national election day, and so I received an email from Cherie Cox, notifying us that we have to, if we have any polling places in the district that schools are used for, then we have to close down our schools that day, and we do. Still have voting at Kelly Early Childhood Center. So I've asked questions, if we have to close down the whole district, or do we have to close down the whole school, just that one particular school? And I cannot get a straight answer, Kaylee. I mean, Kaylee went through LSBA to try to get an answer, I went through John Geis to try to get an answer, and nobody really seems to know, because when you read the law, it could be interpreted either way. So what we looked at is, we already have a calendar, and so the thought was, you know, what would be the easiest for parents, if we closed everything, or just that one school? And kind of what we thought about was, we could close on the 8th, and maybe just move that school day to the 7th. And so that way, we won't have to make up any days later on. So if we, you know, voted to do that, we could just come to school on November 7th, take the 8th off for election day, and then finish out the week on the 9th, 10th, and 11th. So I thought that might be the easiest thing to plan for, for parents.
Sounds fine, amazing. Number one.
You couldn't just leave that school home that day, since it's a head start?
We thought, we, I can't get an answer. Just Kaylee, I mean.
What did Monica say?
Oh, I hadn't even asked my.
Miss Monica?
No, I mean, that would be fine if we could, but I don't know.
Legally, you talking about?
Legally, I don't know, as you went through, like I said, Kaylee.
I was called on coming home from Orlando, and the lady from LSBA said, if I were all, I'd close the whole district.
Really?
She said, you have one school, and then she said, plus, what if you have mad warrants? And I said, well, you know.
I mean, if it was okay, the kids could stay home, and the boys could still come, it'd be a PD day. You know, they could still work, because they're in their rooms, they vote in the gym. So, but, I mean, whatever, legally is.
To me, it sounds like what you said. Go to school on Monday, because you're off on Mondays anyway. Come school on Monday, and use the Tuesday for the Monday.
That's what I thought.
And that way, hey.
I think you should just close the head start, because that's going to throw those parents' schedule all off.
You're right there, we could do that, because for daycare stuff.
We just kept it back and grooving, trying to get them to come to school.
But they're going to be off on a Monday anyway.
No, we're just talking about one school now, you know, just one school is all we're talking about.
And how many kids is it?
They can't get a natural where that's legal to do, though, to close one.
It can be interpreted multiple ways, so my thought was just let y'all decide what we want to do.
What are they going to do if we do it? If we just vote?
They're going to say, oh. And Ms. Monica may want to let the teachers come that day.
I don't know if we take a do if we did.
Right, I mean, I think that we could say, this is the way we interpret it, and as long as we don't have school going on at the polling place, then we'd be okay.
My thing is, I don't want to mess up all the kids. We got to skip, we have practices. We're just going to have debates.
If they vote on a Monday or Saturday, they're there, you know, they have been. They probably just couldn't go in that area.
Yeah, we can block off, you can block off that area.
We block it off anyway, where people come in to vote, you have to give them access to the bathroom, but we block it off where they'll go all up down the hall, so we can still block it. If they have to go to the bathroom, they could just.
Are you sitting there telling me that they have voted out there before, and it's children in there?
No, on Saturday, we just block it where people don't come, because if they come vote, and then they say, I've got to go to the bathroom, then they're up in the building, you know, so.
The bathrooms are just right there.
Right.
But no, what we're talking about is not bringing the children to Kelly.
Right, right.
Oh, down the hatch.
Right. So if y'all want to do that.
Somebody want to make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion, just Kelly head start.
You have a second?
I'll second.
And if, I don't know what you say about the teachers.
We'll figure that out.
Yeah, whatever you think.
And if they can't be there, we, they could go to pre-aid.
All in favor? All right, before we get to the financial update, we got two addendums that we need. I need a motion in a second, I want to add to the bill, I don't need to read these. All right, number one is review proposed resolution for investing $500,000 in a nine-month CD at Caldwell Bank under general fund, I guess it'd be a business separate.
No, we need one motion, a second to add.
Both of them?
Yeah.
And then the second one is a view, review proposed resolution to open a money market account at Homeland Bank in the amount of $225,000 under school lunch.
I make a motion, we add that to the agenda.
I got a second.
Okay, I need a roll call, Ms. Rentsch.
Yes.
Ms. Judith Ann.
Yes.
Ms. Melinda.
Yes.
Mr. Castle.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
All right, David, you go.
Okay, yeah, I think Gary's already said what I was hoping to bring forward, and that's, on the general fund, it would be a $500,000 CD, and we have a little bit of excess cash. We've had excess cash in the past, but, you know, the rates were, you know, they were worthless on, as far as trying to invest, and it just, we left the cash in the checking account. For now, we can invest about $500,000, because we have that much in excess. At a later date, if we have a little bit more excess, we'll invest that. And this will mature in May, so it will be in time for us to get our summer payrolls paid, and not be short at that point. And then the, and then that one.
Now, wait a minute, so you believe with all your heart, this is the right thing to do?
Yes, ma'am.
You sure?
Well, I mean, barring some craziness, yeah.
All right.
And that would be at Caldwell Bank and Trust, then the $225,000 would be at Homeland, and that would be for the benefit of the school lunch program, that's where the bank account is already, for the school lunch. And when I called Richard Meredith at Homeland, he said, why don't we just do a money market instead of CD? That way you can move the money in and out, you know, as you need to. And I figured we might be able to move a little bit more in. And currently, the rate's 2%, it's not a guaranteed rate like a CD, but, you know, might go up, might go down.
Oh, why does the lunch, the food lady have her brow wrinkled?
Oh, no, I don't. I'm just focused on.
Are you sure?
I'm sure. No, no, we've already talked about. Yeah. He talked to me about.
It raised about.
That's just to have it.
It raised about. Raised about $4,500 for lunch, raised about $7,500 for general fund.
You sure? Well, you know, you are in charge of the money, you better be sure.
I'm sure.
So you need a motion, then we go ahead and do it? I'll make a motion, we did it.
Separately.
You have a second?
So that's Ms. Melinda on the first one, and Ms. Randy.
Is this a roll call, or?
We can do a roll call, it's about to do with finances. Roll call for the first one, for the Caldwell Bank, $225, Ms. Rentsch.
Caldwell Bank, $500.
I'm sorry, Caldwell Bank, $500, apologize. Ms. McKee.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Castles.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
Got that one. The next one is for the Homeland Bank.
So we had, we need another motion?
Mm-hmm.
Another motion.
All right, second.
I'll second.
All right. That was Ms. King in a little.
Yes, okay, so for the Homeland Bank, $225 under lunch, Mr. Rentsch.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Castle.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
That was my financial update, that's all.
That's it?
You must really enjoyed Alaska.
Or chill.
All right, item D is the district leaders update.
All right. Start over in the corner?
Oh, great. We had our new teacher orientation Monday, it was a great success. We got 22 new folks, either moving positions, coming in from other districts, or completely new to the profession. They were partnered with a buddy teacher, and we spent two, three hours fed them lies, and showed them the ropes, and they really were able to get into the different programs, and get the feel of it, because their buddy teacher was side by side with them.
Do you have all the physicians fielded at the high school?
100%, district-wide.
Yeah, right now. Thank you. Mike, you want to before I forget?
Sure. IT department, we are seeing what we normally see at this time of year. This board doesn't work, we can't print to that printer, the little things, and that is remarkable, because we had three schools that had all new network equipment put in. So things are going swimmingly for us, so we're good.
One of the things that we did with our back-to-school PD was some training on what we call NTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support, but what we're really excited about is, we've been able to use a combination of different funds, including some Ezra money, some redesign money, and it's going to allow us to expand the work that Ms. Guerrero's been doing with the lower grades up into even the junior high. So now we have, through some grant funds, and we've partnered with a company called Bailey Group, and we're going to be doing some real strategic push-in led by Ms. Guerrero, but it falls a little bit under my department also, where we've got somebody who's really going to push in and work hard with her guidance with sixth grade and fifth grade. So we're really excited about getting that started this year. We think we're going to see some great gains within those groups, just like we have some of the younger kids. So we're, we're ready to get that going.
So you're telling me, Ms. Guerrero's going to train the teacher, or is it going to be extra help for them?
All of the above. We have an extra. Uh, all of the above. We have an extra position that's coming from grant money, and Ms. Guerrero and, um, a company that, um, Bailey Group is coming in and providing some training and support from that too. And this company is, um, it's out of Mississippi, and we are, all of our teachers, I may be saying something that Tim's gonna say, whatever. All of our K-2 teachers have to go through, um, a training I call the Science of Reading. She's finished it. I'm only about halfway through. But Louisiana has really taken a lot of the pieces of Mississippi's literacy model and adapted it for us because what they've been doing in Mississippi is, um, I mean, everybody all over the world's looking at what they've done with this model. So, we actually got somebody who helped implement it there, who's gonna come in and help us do what they did. So, we're pretty excited.
So, you're telling me this Ms. Guerrero and this person you're gonna hire, will they go from school to school with this program?
Yes.
And they're gonna concentrate on just fifth and sixth, or they're gonna go four, five? I mean, six and seven? Are they gonna go four, five?
It's just, uh, central, sorry. It's central and the junior high.
Oh, it's just one school and, oh, two schools?
Oh, it's just six schools?
It's through, uh, the salary is paid through, uh, the CLSD grant, which is the literacy grant, which funded the salary.
Well, get onto the school, it don't matter, but we're gonna have money. So, that person will work at Central and at the junior high.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, you know, we talked about this last year, at the end of last year, when we had all the numbers come in. You know, we talked about how the fourth and fifth grade group was the group that really lost out during the COVID period.
So, it's those kids, you know, now up in, in fifth and sixth grade, and their scores, I mean, there's a piece of, I feel like everything.
Well, I'm talking about the fourth and fifth, the kids that are hitting fourth and fifth grade now. But they may be second and third grade.
They'll still get, but not through this extra person. They'll still have what they had before through Ms. Guerrero.
Okay, so with this extra person, uh, does this mean extra work for the teacher?
Absolutely not.
Let me write that down.
It's actually somebody that's gonna come in and help them do what they're already doing.
This is really gonna be a dynamic person, a get up and go get it person you hired. Tell me that. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Monica?
We're off and running. We have, um, 60-ish kids down, um, at Kelly, we have a three-year-old program. That is in large part that Ester money, that extra classroom, because of being able to take in those extra over-income kids. So, um, we'll have one more year of that, and then you'll be back to probably the lower numbers. We did the ribbon cutting at the daycare this past weekend, and they have inquired about early Head Start. So, we may shift some of our slots. This will be talking with Allison doing it, but we may can shift some of our slots to the daycare, um, for early Head Start. That would help with our numbers and help them as well. We do have those birth-to-three seats that are there. We have nine seats, and we're working with them, um, to get those applications done and those families, um, assisted in that. So, that'll just, um, those families that they qualify for that won't pay tuition to the daycare, and it's a year-by-year thing. So, it may go one year and it may go away. We have 103 at the pre-K, so they're, um, 17, 18 in the class. Um, still have new kids enrolling every day. This week, we've had some come in. So, um, still going, our teachers are really excited about Ms. Rhonda Whitten, um, the literacy training that she's doing with them. It's gonna enable the threes and then the fours. She's doing it with the three-year-olds too. So, it'll be the threes and the fours hitting kindergarten. They should be on target when they go, so.
Now, refresh my memory, where is the kid, oh, I hit, oh, daycare?
It's the old Spartans.
I got you.
There by the, at a high school.
Okay.
Yeah, and so both Rhonda and our early interventionist Cindy Platt will be supporting them as well. So, um, and they're, they've actually adopted the same curriculum that we use. So, they're gonna have it for the ones and the twos, and then those that go to Kelly will get it for the threes and then the fours. So, it's gonna, they're, they're really wanting to work with us with kind of a seamless, um, you know, transition between all those kids.
That's nice.
Great.
They're only, they're only licensed with 24 kids, so it's not a large, large.
Yeah.
Thing. But if they're getting the ones and twos, the threes can come to Kelly, then it'll be good.
Now, refresh, but did you say they fill all of their spots?
No, we haven't. We're, we're, it's a, it's an application, kind of like what we had to do for, for Head Start, um, to qualify for those things. It is income-based, and mom and/or dad, if it's one parent, two parents, they have to be working or in school. So, it can't be, whereas with Head Start, if you had two parents not working, they can claim no income and they're just in. These spots can't be that way. It has to be families that are working or going to school, you know, and have some income. It has to be some income coming in. They can't just.
So, we're giving, right.
So, it's just to help the working families.
We definitely have the right woman in that spot.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, look at here on that joke.
I just hit him while I was going.
Stand up. I got that floor there. Uh, I'm still learning, without a doubt. I've only been on the job for just a month and a few, about a week or so. So, I'm still learning the ins and outs of everything. Uh, but we got lights, we got water, we got air conditioner, the bus is rolling. We're in session. We're doing good right now. Unfortunately, you know, yes, with, with the loss of Mr. Charles, that is, is cutting back on some projects. I'm trying to keep as much of the business at, at home, instead of having to call people that are outside our parish to come in and do work. And, and it's a challenge because those guys, they're, they're doing other jobs in other places, and it's, you know, you're in the list. And, and you're on that waiting list, and when they get to you, they get to you. So, everybody's been real patient with me. I'm just waiting for them to blow up, so I don't have to answer to anyone.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
You told me there at First Baptist Church, I asked you what you was gonna do when you got hired, and you told me that you was gonna do exactly what the boss said. And I told your wife, I hope you did a little bit more than that. Have you done a little bit more than that?
Who's the boss? Is it wife the boss?
Here's your boss right here. Have you done something besides what she's told you to do on your new job?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I don't have to consult with her. I'm just gonna do it.
We're gonna, and what was, what was man doing on that, uh, track?
Man on the track.
Is your memory that short?
Man on the track.
It was two men on the end of the track last time I was there, and you.
Oh, they were, uh, no, no, they were working on, uh, building a new, uh, frame for the business signs.
Oh, okay.
That are gonna be put up.
Lots of projects going on.
I got a question. What about the scoreboard? When's it gonna be there? They ain't gonna get a new one?
September 1st is the, is the date that we're trying to have all of those projects done. So, yeah, that's a, that's a quarterback club-initiated, um, project. But September 1st is the, is the date that we're trying to have everything completed.
Is Mr. Sadiya in charge today?
He asked where the scoreboard was one day, and I told him, I said, I don't know. I did.
Would not ask you.
It was still being manufactured.
You're not gonna say I don't know?
I wouldn't have that.
It's personal.
It should be up.
No.
I'm glad we had something listed on the.
We had, we had to pay for half of it upfront, and then we paid for the other half. And so, when the auditors came in, they wanted to know where it was, well, it's not here yet because it will be here on September 1st. But, yeah, that project is coming along very well.
They working good on stage.
They are, they are. All right, Ms. Wells?
Um, well, I've already covered testing. So, um, with CTE, we have some new programs at the high school. We have a certified clinical medical assistant program. So, we have a health science pathway that, um, we added this year. This will be the first year. We also added a DUCS Unlimited Conservation and Ecology that's gonna be taught through Ag. So, hopefully, we can get some kids certified in that this year. I've got two teachers that are being trained in business of retail. So, that'll be a new program for kids to get certified in in our business pathway. And then we started last year, the pre-educator pathway. You know, the state's real big on the grow your own with the teacher searches. Grow your own teachers, um, in your parish. And so, we have that pre-educator pathway, um, and it actually expanded a little bit this year. We started with the class last year. Um, we're, um, taking the second class this year, and we have more kids enrolled. And so, hopefully, that'll keep growing as we go.
Do you feel like that was a success last year?
Yeah, I mean, the kids actually got to go into the elementary schools and the junior high and observe teachers, and they would come back together, what did you see? The class they took last year was multicultural learning, and so they had to evaluate those teachers in those classrooms based on what they were learning in their class. And so, they did a lot of observations. Um, and then this year, they have to do more observations. And this year, they're taking foundations of education. So, they'll get a little more into classroom management and what there's, you know, as teachers. So, hopefully, each year, we'll add more kids to that program.
Now, I'm sorry to press.
What was the DUCS Unlimited program for?
Um, Conservation and Ecology.
And is, is that, are, were we getting any support from DUCS, through DUCS Unlimited for that?
They created the certification and got it approved by the state. And it's an online curriculum that, um, Ms. Meadows did this summer and took the test and passed it. Um, and so, we ordered it for her Ag students. And so, they'll go through that program with her and take the test at the end of the year. Yeah, DUCS Unlimited developed it and came up with it.
So, they just developed it?
And they have a partnership with the company that puts out the online version for the students.
Okay.
And then they have to take the certification exam at the end. Um, and then this summer, we had a CTE advisory committee, um, and so I met with community business leaders, parents, our CTE teachers, and we just talked about, like, our new pathways, what we do in CTE, our funding and those types of things. So, hopefully, every summer, that'll become a thing where we have that advisory committee so that the community's involved and knows what, what's going on.
Thank you. Ms. White?
All right. Lights, camera, action.
Thank you.
And it has our logo on it. It bears in the bottom of your bed and your box. We threw all two employees, we came in the morning of, so we didn't have time to get them to the employees. So, we gave two boys theirs first, and we give them one to Jim McCann. Every year, he comes to our staff development, and he does a training with the, um, amateurs.
Let's decide training.
And tell them thank you very much.
I'll make sure he gets it.
Make sure they give it to him now. And we had a very good, uh, staff development this year. Um, I was looking on the evaluations, and I thought, this is the first time we got none. I sent that out, and then I have to look at the pen and say, all right, let me back it up with one, the one. But everything else was, we want him back, we want him back. So, we are going to have him back, a parent night. He's going to talk, well, it's the daytime that morning. He's gonna talk at the high school to the students. Uh, later, he's gonna talk to the, uh, junior high. He has a message for the students. Uh, he has a, you have written six, seven books already. All employees received the book, and we have some extra books. I'll bring you all books, uh, at the next meeting, school board members. Everybody else got books. But, um, we have very successful, you know, everything taken in place, and we're negative, so, um, when we have a parent night, it's gonna be, like I said, we'll do some kind of sentence for the students, like we did before. Those parents came out and get that extra 10 points. You know that, you know, they'll come. And then they submit, but we'll work that up. But, um, other than that, I think that's about it. But, um.
Exciting.
Yeah, huh?
Exciting.
Yeah, it is. He, he, I mean, he, I didn't go to sleep all day myself. Last year, so I said, I'm awake.
Randy, were you there for that session? Yeah, I saw you get down somewhere. What'd you say?
I said, I didn't snort it, so.
He didn't let you sit down. You were up and down and up and down.
He was really good.
Yeah, he was very good. So, we're excited that we'll be able to get him for our junior high kids, our high school kids, and then our parents. I mean, so we're getting three for one with this leadership, so he's.
Well, excuse me, I have another question from Mr. Wade. I'll tell you now, we're sitting here saying, do you have enough bus drivers?
Yeah, we got, we got people in the seats driving, yes, ma'am.
Do you have enough bus drivers?
I could use some subs.
Excellent. And we just put something out today too, um, on our Facebook, and we'll try to advertise, just we need subs for every, every job. Teachers, parents, bus drivers, cafeteria, um, care professionals, so, yeah.
You could just go on and work.
Ms. McKee, if I gotta drive a bus, I got my CD out. I'll take care of it.
I know you care.
Thank you. Um, you know, we had a great back-to-school PD, and, uh, I think this is the first year I've ever seen all of our teachers just so excited about a speaker and just the enthusiasm about being back together and, um, all the work that we did this summer and, uh, summer coming off of summer camp and the enthusiasm and the success of summer camp. I think, um, we had so much teamwork and collaboration. This was the first year I didn't have to make teachers work in grade-level groups. They just automatically went there and collaborated with one another and were happy. It didn't matter what school you were, you were associated with. Everybody worked as a team, and it was very, um, refreshing. And, uh, we have two new elementary leaders. Uh, we have lots of changes, and we have lots of new faces. And, you know, I was thinking about that new teacher program, and, uh, we have a lot of teachers in our district, new, new teachers and not so new teachers that are a product of Caldwell Parish. And I know I have three students of my own, and it just makes you proud that they wanna come back and, and serve our kids. I'm very proud of them. And, uh, Ms. Gilpatrick at Columbia hit the, I mean, she hit the ground running, and so did Ms. Gregory at Union Central, so it's like no change ever happened. So, they've kept things running smoothly. Um, it's been a great two soft start dates. The only thing I do wanna say is, um, the administration team at Union Central, the admin team at Caldwell Parish Junior High, because of, um, the competitive fundings in that, uh, literacy grant, we participated in, um, a training for teacher collaboration and interdisciplinary leadership team and how to conduct those meetings and, and get things focused in identifying needs and weaknesses within the school. So, that was a four-day training. And then we will have trainings throughout the year with School Support Institute that will support them in, uh, getting their, uh, instruction, uh, up and helping support the leaders and the teachers, uh, in those areas of weaknesses. And, uh, we're excited about that. Of course, we're partnering again with ANET, and we'll, uh, have a new coach this year, so we're excited about that and all the things.
And I attribute that math growth too, to the work we did with ANET. And it was a big, that was our main focus area this past year, and it showed. So, super excited about that.
I'm gonna add something to mine. I like to thank, um, Mr. Michael Foye, setting up all that technology for me. He does it every year. I was leaving the high school, he was still there. You going home tonight? He does a lot that you all don't know that he does, you know? Say, walk in your shoes. And then I kept on saying, you gotta get my computer together. But he does, he does a lot. He really does. So, thank you, Michael. And guess what? You get yours first. Put it down on Mike. But you know what? I had a friend in front that was white, and showed up somewhere, and I thought, every time, that's my neighbor Lou. That's why they ran in. It don't show up as well, but it's, it's on there. It's on there.
Thank you for it.
And thanks again, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, Sandra?
Um, our first two days went well. We have a lot of staff changes, um, in the cafeterias. Some have moved around, some have moved up, some have left. We are short-staffed at the high school and junior high, but we're working on getting those positions filled. I don't like to hire anybody that has never been in the cafeteria before, so we will sub that.
Yeah.
And when we find, you know, who we want, who's a good fit, um, at each location, we will then hire them full-time. So, even with all of that, everything ran smooth. The, uh, we are looking at food shortages again. This year is gonna be tough trying to get food. Of course, anybody in the food industry is, is going through that. Prices have gone up, and, um, so we're just trying to get through it. And I have told, um, principals and just be patient with us. You know, we have a menu that I do, but it may not be exact every time because we're having trouble. I found out last week, no, this week, Tuesday, that our milk is no longer in bottles, and that may not sound like a big deal to y'all. But the kids are gonna be very upset over that because the cartons just aren't, they're not near as, they're cheaper. But I've always done bottles because that's what they prefer, and so, but we didn't have a choice, um, with our milk vendor. So, I was kinda upset over that. But anyway, we're gonna get through all of it. I know, I did too, but they're, they're spoiled to the bottles because we had to do the cartons for summer feeding, and I heard about it.
They're hard to open for them.
They're very hard, and which the bottles, you know, they have to do the, the tab thing, but I think they've gotten, I think they've gotten. But I think they've gotten, I think they've gotten used to that, you know.
Ms. Sandra, what about all your equipment in your kitchens? Is it all working?
It is and when it doesn't, he gets a text. I told him, I said, my, my, my department is a full-time for maintenance. He learned the first day they came back.
Learned how to plug in a hot water heater. I've learned how to turn a gas valve on.
I mean, the first day my managers came back, the phone started going off. I said, welcome, we're back. So, but it's all good. Everything is, is working to the best of our instincts.
That's why he's making the shake bucks now.
All right, thank y'all. Super generous report.
All right.
Wait a minute, Mr., oh, someone has something he wants to say.
I sure do.
He sure does.
Yeah, we, Jordan Lefoon added on as the lead teacher at the junior high and has been getting his feet under him there. And Elena Garcia and DeeDee Wiles at the high school, the principal and assistant principal, have been doing their orientations with the groups as they come in during the soft start. And they're looking forward to having everybody on campus tomorrow.
Exciting, exciting. Thank you.
All right, so we are going to, number one, we're working on an advertisement for Charles's physician and we're, we're hoping to try to get that out tomorrow. We had to go back and look at previous advertisements and job descriptions and that way we put that all out and know what the expectations are. Know that there's probably several people who are interested in it. So, James came to me and said, as soon as we can get through and get everybody in, in the building, let's sit down and try to do that. So, hopefully we'll get that out tomorrow and then advertise for two weeks. And then he and his staff will, you know, he'll do the interview process and things with that. So, that's something big. Next thing is, so Kaylee emailed me about the November board meeting. So, the November board meeting is while the business department has gone to Lasbo. And so, we need to see about maybe rescheduling that. I don't remember what you told me.
The first one would be fine by me. If the business manager's okay with that.
So, if that's okay with y'all, we would move the board meeting to the first Thursday. And then when she said that, I looked to see October is the homecoming week. And so, that Thursday is the night that we have the bonfire and pep rally with all the schools. And so, I hate for us not to be able to support that, so we can move to October meeting. Let me make sure that October, this, nope, we cannot do it on the sixth because that's when we're having our, our parent night. So, maybe could we do it on October the eleventh, which is the Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Yeah.
That's probably what it's going to be every night, it's seven.
All right. And what was the date for the November?
November the third.
November the third?
Oh, no, 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 that's the junior game.
That's what?
That's the junior high.
That's the Thursday night game.
That's a Thursday night game, yeah. Yeah.
What about the next Tuesday?
Did y'all do the eighth? Did y'all, is that?
That's election day.
Do it on a Monday day, could you do that?
Sure. Monday?
You said, she said Wednesday?
No, Monday.
Oh, Monday.
How about Monday was?
Oh, that's not a good day.
Why not just move it to the fifteenth then?
So, we're out for Tuesday, so.
Mary, you're going to have to give it up. It's going to have to be Monday. You go ahead and give it up.
That's a junior high game that night.
On Monday?
No, not the Monday.
How about November the seventh, that Monday? I know it's not ideal.
That's the November one, right?
Yeah.
It's not the November meeting?
You said November?
Yeah. That's, yeah.
November.
November the seventh.
November seventh.
We'll give reminders, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. And October the eleventh, October the eleventh, yeah. All right, that's all I have.
All right. Are you here busting me, Terry?
No, I want to go, uh, uh, I'm sorry.
Well, you're fine.
Uh, do we have any money left for our projects?
We need to look at that.
She doesn't have, he doesn't do that.
No, I'm looking at Ralph. We, I think we just finally finished all of the walkways.
Yes.
And what is it, wait on?
The playground.
The playground there. So, we will start meeting again from walkway, you know. Yeah, so we need to pull all that together. We'll definitely take a look at that.
So, we think we might have some money left?
Oh, yeah, I know we will. I just don't know that it's going to be enough to do, like what we had put on the, on pause was the tennis courts. So, we'll just have to look and see.
Anything else?
I'm like emotionally, oh, that's hard.
He might ask.
How much business friendly is that building? Well, Mr. Wadley's, what, what do they got to do with it?
You talking about the Cannon Center?
No, no. That, and the next to his shop, his shop?
Yeah, he used to be up there by his, his shop.
What you talking about?
He's talking about a little wheel.
It's between the.
Not their brother Tranchan?
Yeah. The, they'll name them and then the gym or whatever.
At one time they had.
Like a trailer or something.
At one time they had a weightlifting in it.
Well, that's why they had the, your husband worked there with especially need kids.
You're talking about it in central?
Yes.
Turned his school?
Yeah, all turned.
Yes, they has, the asbestos was removed from it and they're getting ready to demolition, right?
I'm meeting with somebody tomorrow morning.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because he, there, this round, I saw those kids going there and getting injured. And I went out there and looked, some of them boys, dangerous man, about to fall.
Yeah, yeah. We're on it tomorrow. We actually talked about that today, yeah, so. Done, we're working on it.
In the meat house or the, oh, my God.
I got it super late last year.
Is it still storied?
Is it still?
It's got lots of storage in it, lots of stuff. The, the, the Cannon Center. The Cannon, the Cannon Center.
Oh, it's, it's full of stuff.
Full of stuff?
Wonder how, how do I have to keep it?
The stuff that's stored, we use the stuff that's in there.
Uh-oh.
So, it's like some of the homecoming stuff and.
Yeah, and there's, there's student desks in there.
There's all kinds of stuff, yeah.